First time is roll call.
Alderman Baman.
Present.
Alderman Coleman, Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
All right, next time it'll be invocation by Chris Allen of Valley Baptist Church followed by pledge of allegiance from Alderman Headley.
Eternal Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight by way of invocation to ask three things. Lord, first of all, we ask that you would support the ideas that we place before you and also that we would be in support of the way that you would have this city to be run. Lord, the second thing we ask is for your help and support in making good decisions and making wise decisions on behalf of the people and the city that we call home. Lord, also, we ask for a special prayer of blessing and guidance for the city council members and those in attendance tonight so that we can act according to the way that you would have us to do. We place this entire ceremony and this entire event this evening in your hands and thank you for the opportunity to be here present tonight. I pray this be in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge leaders.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next time it'll be approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no proclamations, we'll move on to citizens' participation. We ask that citizens who wish to address the board come forward to the podium and microphone and please give your name and address for the record. Have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, move on to the citizen's agenda.
I move that we accept the citizen's agenda.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve the citizen's agenda. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Seeing no previous business, new business, presentations, or public hearings, we'll move on to ordinances.
This is Bill number three, eighty dash ten, it's the second reading, it will be ordinance twenty, twenty-four forty-six, an ordinance approving the final plat- of Woodbury Sixth Plat.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B eighteen dash ten for its second reading, making it ordinance number twenty-four dash forty-six.
I have motion, Alderman Baman, to accept Bill B eighteen dash ten for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four forty-six. Drive a second. Second, Alderman West. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is simply the second reading that will make Woodbury Sixth Plat official. As you will notice, this, the first reading of this was in June eleventh of twenty eighteen. At that time, we were waiting additional engineering plans, which we have received and are ready to go at this point. If you have any questions, Mr. Murphy can answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none, then, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Baman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Five zero, Mayor. This is Bill eighteen dash eighteen, uh, the second read, which will become ordinance twenty-four forty-seven, an ordinance changing the zoning for certain land in Grand Valley from R one, single-family to R three, multi-family land unit development.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill eighteen eighteen for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four forty-seven.
I have motion, Alderman Headley, to accept Bill B eighteen dash eighteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four forty-seven. Drive a second.
Second.
Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just the second read to the, uh, the ordinance that you approved at the last meeting. Uh, it's for the property along E E Kirby between Walnut and Yenny owned by Mr. Wolf, who is here. He's redeveloping all of, uh, the property that's set vacant and this will be specifically for, um, R three, uh, senior housing.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Baman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Five zero, Mayor. This is Bill number B eighteen dash nineteen, uh, for its second read, which will be ordinance twenty-four forty-eight, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a convenient storage facility for Chad Reitzinger.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill eighteen dash nineteen for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four forty-eight.
I have motion, Alderman Headley, to accept Bill B eighteen dash nineteen for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four forty-eight. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Baman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, again, another second reading for a CUP. You guys have heard the, uh, public hearing and the first read at the last meeting. Uh, any questions, Mr. Murphy can answer.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Baman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Five zero, Mayor. This is Bill B eighteen dash twenty, um, which will become ordinance twenty-four forty-nine, the second read, uh, and ordinance calling an election in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri on April second, twenty nineteen.
Mayor, I move we accept Bill eighteen dash twenty for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four forty-nine.
I have motion, Alderman Headley, to accept Bill B eighteen dash twenty for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four forty-nine. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, just to recap, the filing for the April second election will open on December eleventh and will close at five P M. on, five P M. on Tuesday, January fifteenth. Uh, this will be for an election for Alderman Ward one, two, and three. Any questions can be directed to Mrs. Ozenbach.
Any questions? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Baman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Five zero, Mayor. This is Bill B eighteen dash twenty-one for its second read, which will become ordinance twenty-four fifty, an ordinance approving the sale of certain real property in Grand Valley, Missouri to L and L Development LLC and authorizing the city administrator to execute all necessary documents required to effect your way to close that transaction.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B eighteen dash twenty-one for its second reading, making it ordinance, ordinance number twenty-four fifty.
I have motion, Alderman Baman, to approve Bill B eighteen dash twenty-one for its second reading, making ordinance twenty-four fifty. Drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, again, second read, uh, to close on the property that we purchased several years ago. We sold it to a, uh, land developer and they will be putting, uh, single-family housing on it. The final negotiated sale price is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for sixteen acres.
Yeah, they're not, they're not turning down the big house though, are they?
No, this is the vacant property. This is not really even the cash of the property the house is on.
Any questions? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Alderman Baman.
Yes.
Alderman West.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
Five zero, Mayor. The first read of Bill B eighteen dash twenty-three, an ordinance by the Board of Aldermen of the City of Grand Valley, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to establish the two thousand nineteen full-time and part-time pay scale.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B eighteen dash twenty-three for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B eighteen dash twenty-three for its first reading, bringing it back by title only for its second reading. I have a second.
Second.
Alderman Baman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, we've talked about this several times. Uh, this was the Springstead, uh, study, the city commission, to look at our compensation and benefits. This ordinance, uh, is the first of two different, uh, steps. One of the first things that we have to do is actually adopt the salary classification. After discussion in the workshops, uh, we, uh, staff understood that we want to come up with, the board wants to come up with an implementation strategy, uh, that, uh, is not just a uniform that addresses, uh, some sort of performance or merit, um, qualification or increase. So, uh, a- as such, we are moving forward with the adoption of the pay scale only. This does not address implementation and that will be brought, brought back to the board as a second action.
Any discussion?
One is, it talks about the range between each pay grade being six percent and then it says forty percent from the minimum to the maximum. So, my question is, how many years does that represent between the minimum pay and the maximum pay for any pay grade?
Well, that's, that's part of the implementation, implementation strategy that we'll have to come up with, whether we want to use a step program or, uh, you know, to, to bridge that gap. As of right now, an employee starts and they, depending on, uh, we use the last several, several years, for example, there's no way for an employee to move up through their salary grade unless the board just gives increases on an annual basis, which is, you know, usually a, a COLA. So, there's no practical way for an employee, uh, to start out with salary grade and to progressively work up through that grade to reach the maximum other than the annual raises that the board, uh, gives. So, one of the things that we would like to do is come up with some sort of step program that addresses, uh, experience, qualifications, education, and it also gives some benchmarks that those employees can, uh, reach for to, to, uh, like in a step program, to, to give regular increases, uh, that aren't just part of a merit or COLA increase.
My, my other question has to do with the agreement with Springstead. Now, it said that they were going to, uh, come up with some kind of agreement on classification, compensation, and that there's benefit study. There wasn't any benefit study.
There was.
There were, there were statements about benefits, but there wasn't any study or comparison or numbers or anything that could go into that.
Uh, I believe there was comparison, I'm looking around for clear, there was comparison on benefits, weren't there?
Uh, there.
Because they, they drew conclusions as to whether our benefits were average, below, or above. Now, that was in the work, working documents. It's, I mean, we hired Springstead to do the work, but we didn't present all of the worksheets and the work documents to, uh, the board simply because we paid them to do that.
They're saying, okay, you're close or you're this or that. That doesn't tell me anything. I mean, I like to see numbers comparing numbers. That's what I do, is compare numbers. And if, if that information exists, then I would, I would really think that the board should have a, have an opportunity to review that. Because, you know, I hit on the benefits the last time we met, talking about salaries, because they seem to be excluded from any compensation. And it's an important part of the compensation for all our employees. And I think it's important that we understand where we stand, not only on salaries, but also on benefits, since that is an expense for the city.
I felt like that was addressed in the study, but I'll get you more details about that.
Anyone else have any personal questions or comments? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, first mayor. This is Bill number B eighteen dash twenty-four, the first read, um, and ordinance approving the twenty nineteen fiscal year budget comprehensive schedule of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill B eighteen dash twenty-four for its first reading, bring it back by title only for a second reading.
I have motion, Alderman West, to approve Bill B eighteen dash twenty-four for its first reading, bringing it back by title only for its second reading. Drive a second.
Second.
Alderman Baman. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, the twenty, the proposed twenty nineteen budget, um, is included, uh, in the following documents, uh, behind this bill. There is one item that I'd like to call your attention to in tonight's budget, uh, that unless I hear, uh, otherwise from the board, I intend on, um, making just one simple adjustment. In transportation, uh, we had a two hundred, uh, approximately two hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus. Um, the, the idea with the transportation division was not to have a surplus, but to actually take the funding, um, that was surplus in transportation and move that into a line item that would allow us to do additional projects next year. So, the only change, uh, that you will see between the first and second reading would be on page thirty-three of the budget in its line item, two one zero dash five five dash seven nine four zero zero, and that's the annual C I P appropriation. That's what we operate out of and that's what we use for street repairs. Right now, you'll see that there's budgeted one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for twenty nineteen. I'd like to increase that to three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, for twenty nineteen. What that'll allow us to do is to squeeze as many projects in next year that we can do, uh, roadwork, street, uh, curbs, and sidewalk repairs, and then any additional funding that's left in, left in that line item at the end of the year, uh, can go towards future, uh, projects. Other than that, um, the budget is as presented and I would just ask for the board's approval. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
You're not going to be able to do Front Street, are you?
Next year.
Okay. No, no, I can get Nancy.
Yeah, that costs seven digits. That's a seven-digit one.
Oh, okay.
We're working back to, with, with, with the capture from the, the Tiff project.
No, but I've had people ask me, Nancy's been doing yours. I just, they're, they're trying to.
And that's one of the reasons that we're taking this. Instead of just letting us squeeze into the surplus or the reserves, we're actually, actually allocating it to C I P. That way, in future years, that money builds up and we can put larger projects together, uh, like that.
I did have a question. However, I gave it to Kathy and she was kind enough to look up the answer. My question was, when I was comparing what the information that we received in the workbook to the final that, uh, is on the computer, I noticed that there was a discrepancy between revenues and also the expenses. On the revenue side, there was an increased revenue of four hundred and sixty thousand dollars and on the expense side, there was a three hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars more expense than we had in the book. But she's kind of explained what the problem was.
Okay.
Ryan, that's because we hadn't put the, um, CID budget in yet because it hadn't been approved by the CID board. Some majority of that comes from the CID budget that we approved the Thursday or whatever after the board workshop. That's what that difference is.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, all fairies please say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Five zero, first mayor.
Seeing no resolutions, move on to city attorney's report.
Therefore.
Move on to city administrator and staff's report.
Start with Mr. Davies.
Just one last reminder, uh, this week we have our, our annual community signing holiday festival in Armstrong Park. Um, and we're, we're looking at probably some chilly weather this Thursday. It was maybe even still have some snow on the ground, uh, come Thursday night, but we're still, we're still planning on having it. Um, it is at Armstrong Park. It starts at six P M. Make.
Mr. Royer.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, just wanted to give you kind of a overview of our, um, winter operations on Sunday. We had, uh, two crews come in. They started at seven A M. on Sunday and, uh, just kind of the totals, we had fifty-six point six tons of salt that we put down on Sunday. And, um, on today, we've actually done thirty-three tons. We didn't quite get all the numbers together because we were still working on it when I got these numbers, but, um, we had a hundred and ninety gallons of, uh, calcium chloride that we put out today as well. So, uh, a little bit difficult to the start to that one. We had about a two and a half hour window to put pre-treatment down prior to, or after the rain had started. So, uh, but we did get through the first seconds in the residential streets there before three o'clock, before we started getting significant buildup of snow on the road. But, um, just kind of want to give you an update on how that went, so.
Miss Ozenbach.
I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that our second meeting scheduled in December is actually on Christmas Eve. So, a decision needs to be made about how to move forward with that meeting.
In the past, we haven't really needed any stuff to be completed. I mean, do we see, I mean, we see anything on the road that we need?
No, we've got all the year-end business, uh, scheduled to be completed by the next board meeting. Well, we have the, uh, we have the budget and the pay scale on this for first read. At the next board meeting, you will receive, um, a amended twenty eighteen budget and that's just something that we asked the board to approve before the, the year-end. Uh, and it's, it's just amending the twenty eighteen budget to actually reflect, uh, the true expenditures and revenues of the year. So, that'll be on for two reasons, the next board meeting. Um, it's not, uh, a hot topic. It's, it's, um, more of a housekeeping issue. So, there will be no, uh, business necessarily needs to be taken care of at the second meeting.
If everything's all right, we just probably have done the past and not have the second one unless something comes up. I can always call one then every night if something comes up that we need to take care of. It's all imperative motion then to not have that December twenty-fourth meeting.
I move.
I don't have one. Okay. Uh, Alderman West, motion, second, Alderman Baman. Any discussion then?
Is there another meeting on the tenth?
Yes, I want on the tenth and now there are only one unless something comes up that we need to meet for.
All right, no, this is discussion. All fairies please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right.
Nothing further, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up, this is board of aldermen, reports and comments. Alderman Stratton.
Um, I was just going to tell Rick that I thought the street crews did a great job. Um, I was happy to see them ask people to move their cars, even though I was one of them. Thought it was funny, but, um, I've just never seen him do that before and I think it's needed to be done. So, I was happy to do that.
Alderman Totten.
Well, I'll join the group saying that they've done an excellent job. I had two people before eight o'clock coming with a wonderful job the street crew was doing. And then I had to tell, uh, them that, uh, I had one complaint. The lady wanted to know when they were going to start on the sidewalks. So, back then, I gave her kudos and I gave her the joke of the day. So, I just wanted to do that.
Alderman Coleman.
So, um, I'm gonna ditto what you just said about the streets. I, I thought it was awesome that I got out this morning and there was, it was mainly clear. And, uh, so I think the crews did an awesome job. And I want to apologize to everybody for being late. I had another meeting that I just got out of and rushed over here. So, I'm like, wow, I missed all my parts. Um, but I'm also going to put it on record that this will be my last meeting because of, uh, my election results. So, um, I just want everybody to know that I just really appreciate everybody's support for being on this board and I enjoyed working on this board and, uh, just continuing best wishes for everyone and, and, uh, I'll still be around. So, thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Alderman Headley.
Um, couple, couple things. Uh, you know, I don't know if it's typically this meeting or the next meeting we talk about, but historically, Easton Ford has always donated a paycheck to one of the local charities. Probably will do that this year. And so, that's one thing that most need either is the one, and one need done others.
No, you just, that's, hey, we've got to drive a resolution, don't we? How are we on the baskets?
We're, we got them all lined up.
The what?
We just got them lined up. I, I haven't gotten stuff yet. We got the bags then. I'll deliver those. Um, they were going to decorate the bags tomorrow, so it's snow days. We're having to put the bags.
How you doing budget-wise on that?
Um, you know, right now I'm doing really well. I've collected an additional, I wish I would have known I, I needed a surprise, most of your dollars, extra on top of what the city has funded it. Um, talking back and forth between Costantino, she's really hard, slow to respond.
So, I mean, we've done that one in the past. I will tell you that we started a new fund this year, kind of impromptu. We now have a Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund, thanks to a general, generous donation from the Costantino family. So, I mean, we, and with that, we're going to be, uh, presenting the assistance council with a check. Uh, we're going to present, uh, the Santa bus with a check and we're going to, you know, do some other things with that. So, I mean, that is, you know, we could do baskets again or we could, if we wanted, you know, donate a paycheck to the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund that we just started last week. Uh, then we'll, you know, we're going to spread that out to a bunch of different charities. So, it'd be up to the board. Everybody said we just started out last week because we've never done one before, but other communities do. And the Costantinos were very generous and, uh, gave us a twenty-five hundred dollar check for the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund. So, we started the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund last week.
When they asked, we said absolutely.
We can, we can put that more. I just wanted to.
Yeah, so we can put that, because you guys resolution, we, we got a resolution, right?
Yes.
So, we can put that on the next, next agenda, via resolution.
And again, appreciate the crews working through the night. Unfortunately, my commute was an hour and forty minutes long today or whatever, but it wasn't because of Grand Valley, so.
Alderman West.
I ditto, 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 ditto. On the roads. You did a super job, I'm sure. So, and congratulations to Alderman Coleman on his reelection, or his election. Enjoyed having you on the board.
Alderman Baman.
Uh, next up is mayor's report. Uh, far you kind of discussed the, uh, Mayor's Christmas Tree Funds. I don't need to do that again. Uh, I do want to give, you know, kudos to our street crews because I know that one was not an easy one and I don't, thinking back, I know a lot of those, a lot of our crews probably really knew since the last major one that we've had. I've, you know, the news today, we haven't had one, we haven't had one in over three inches in like four or five years. So, I bet we, a lot of the guys have not had to push one that big before, so, yeah.
I'll do the checks before we, before everyone's.
You got, one of them got stuck on, uh, nature. Go ahead.
Still the air.
Yeah.
And then, uh, so, with just, just announced that the next meeting also then, we will be, uh, you'll, I, we'll turn in a, a letter to us, I'm assuming, and at the next, the next meeting then, we'll have to take action on accepting that resignation as well. And after the first year, we'll figure out what we want to do with that spot, so. But, thanks for all your, you know, just won't be here next meeting, sorry for me to tell you all that stuff, but.
You know, thanks for, you know, stepping in when he did because when he stepped in, it was an open seat and, you know, for everything you've done, everything you've been involved in and it's true. You're not going to, like I said, you're not going to get rid of us. Now, we'll just be bugging you about different stuff.
I can go along.
Yeah. Uh, that is all I have. Do we have any for executives, questions?
All right, well, no need for an executive session. All right, well, no need for an executive session, we'll adjourn.